If I could have your attention, please. Before we get started, I'd like to recognize the Boykowk Troop Ninety-Nine, if you stand, be recognized. They are...[34.22][34.22](applause) They're working on the merit badge and they interviewed us for a brief period of time. And really, on behalf of the board, I would like to tell you that I hope we conduct ourselves up in such a manner that when y'all grow up and be big, you don't want to be just like us. But having said that, if the remaining people would consider standing for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge to the flag, please. And I'd like to recognize the chaplain for the Henry County Police Department, Chaplain Ralph Easterwood. Pastor Easterwood.
Thank you, sir. Before I say my prayer tonight, I just want to take a moment and thank each and every one of you for the dedication that you do as a board member. And I'm aware this is not an easy job and you can't please everyone, but I want to thank you for your decision to take the first step in our quest in Henry County with our public safety professionals by voting a play plan and a public safety reset. I personally witnessed the positive effects on these officers, firefighters, and deputies, how they're being rewarded with a financial future and a plan that allow them to do more for their families. And I hope this will continue of keeping senior, experienced, and dedicated public safety officials and they go forward in Phase Two of this plan as quickly as possible. As I pray, the Bible says, "The effectual fervent prayer of a righteous man availeth much." And I want to, because we're all standing, I thought tonight, we prayed for you, but tonight, I want to pray with you. I thought we might do the model prayer that's in the Word of God about our Father, which is in heaven. And everyone that would take part in that, let us say that together. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done, in earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our debts, as we forgive our debtors, and lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever and ever. And all of God's people said, "Amen." Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The Constitution of the Constitution stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. I'm going to suggest some amendments to the budget, correction to the agenda. We've done enough budget amending. If you'll notice on the agenda, we got an announcement. It says, "Following plan and zoning item was advertised but has been postponed and will be heard at the October the 4th, 2016 Board Commission meeting, and the property will be reposted." Public Carrying MC-16-03, Woodwork Builders of Fort Walton Beach, Florida, request modification of conditions for the Castleberry subdivision located at 1675 South Ola Road and Landlot 240 of the Seventh District. The property consists of 32.61 plus or minus acres, and the request is to reevaluate the zoning conditions given by the zoning CAERZ-05032. Reason I'm adding this on here, we add it just to take it off because when this, the protocol that we use when the agenda is published after five o'clock on Wednesday, anything that's added to or deleted off, we come back and we amend it. And that way, anybody knows that what we do is, everything's above board. We should have put that on the original agenda and it got left off by mistake. So having said that, I would like to ask the board to consider amending this agenda as amended.
A move.
Have a motion District One?
Second.
Second District, correction. Motion from District Three, second from District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. I'm not going to reread the announcement because I just read it. And we normally read that again, obviously, for somewhere down the road if somebody litigates something, then that puts them on notice that we did, in fact, recognize it and we did read it. Having said that, we have board appointments for Department of Family and Children Services. We have two. We have Detective Beth Simpson, Bong, Henry County Police. We have Major Chad Rosenberg, the McDonough Police Department. So if somebody would consider making a motion to approve the resolution, the Board of Commissioners for Appointments at the Henry County Board of Family and Children Services.
So move.
Have a motion from District Three, second from District Five. Any further discussion? If not, raise your right hand. All opposed, same signs, so move. Next, we have a resolution to, an appointment to the Council on Aging from District Four, and I yield the floor to Commissioner Prince.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to appoint Mary Jo Blunt to the Council on Aging.
If you have a motion, have a second. Second District, one. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Next, planning and zoning. Have a Public Carrying RZ-16-16, the Reservoir Group of Athens, Georgia, request a rezoning from R1, Single Family Residential, or R2, Single Family Residential, for the property located at the intersection of Kellytown Woods Drive and Kellytown Road. Sitting south of Kellytown Road and Landlot 72 of the Eleventh District, the property consists of 88.3 plus or minus acres, and the request is for Single Family Residential Subdivision, District Four, Dante. And Dante's absence, we'll recognize Mr. Stacy Jordan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Commissioners. The case before you tonight is a request for a rezoning from R1 to R2 for a piece of property on Kellytown Road consisting of 88.3 acres. They're requesting 77 lots with minimum lot size of 30,000 square feet. Future land use map calls for rural residential land uses in this area. The net density that's proposed is 0.99 dwelling units per acre. You'll notice from your exhibit books and also on the overhead that immediately across Kellytown Road, immediately behind the subject property, there are R2 subdivisions, so there's a precedence in this area. And staff does recommend approval with nine conditions.
And Chairman, if I could add to that, in addition to the staff's recommendation for approval, the zoning advisory board held a hearing, and they also recommend approval with 12 conditions as listed in your exhibit books.
Anybody have any questions for staff? I yield the floor to District Four.
I have nine conditions.
Yes, sir. The staff recommends nine conditions as in your staff report, but the zoning advisory board, they added several conditions, so they actually recommended approval with 12. And that should be on the resolution and also in the executive summary.
I'm not seeing it. I got it. I got it. I yield the floor.
You got it. Anybody else got any questions? If not, will apt come forward, please, and state your request. State your name for the record, please.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Steve Moore with Moore Bass Consulting, 1350 Keys Ferry Court, McDonough, Georgia. Here tonight representing the Reservoir Group in the rezoning request before you this evening. Stacy mentioned the subject property is 88 acres, and our request is to rezone from R1 to R2 for the development of a 77 lot subdivision. And I've got a site plan, I'll just show you. So this is the current layout that we're proposing. As I mentioned before, this property was rezoned to R1, I guess, seven or eight years ago, and I think that it had about 61 lots roughly in the subdivision. We spent a lot of time looking at that, at those previous layouts for the subdivision, and really just, it didn't ever look like what we wanted to put out here. Everything was very straight, very little attention paid to the natural features that were on the site. There are a couple of state waters and creeks and a little bit of low area, and there was, I think, three or four road crossings over the creek, and just didn't, wasn't a very efficient layout, wasn't a very appealing layout, and wasn't a very environmentally friendly layout. So we took a different approach, and the result is what you see here. So we kind of identified the environmentally constrained areas, those areas that are sensitive that need to be protected, and you can see that is kind of in the middle of the site. We have very large lots that back up to that area. We, and this result again, is 77 lots that are R2, 30,000 square foot, 125-foot frontage. R1 is 150 feet of frontage. But there's some positive to that reduced lot width that I wanted to just touch on briefly. And that has to do with the curb appeal and the ability for a homeowner to adequately maintain their front yards. 125 feet is easy to maintain, and it's easy for your neighbor to maintain, and you have this continuity of manicured, kept landscaping as you drive through the community. When you have that additional 25 feet per lot, that's 50 feet total, it starts to get to where somebody just doesn't cut kind of everything in their yard, and you end up with some patchy, kind of weed thicket areas between these lots that nobody's just willing to maintain, and it grows up, and it just doesn't look as good as an R2 subdivision with 125-foot of frontage. So that's what we're proposing. A couple of key features to this project, we have proposed, in accordance with staff's recommendation, a 25-foot landscape buffer along Kellytown Road that, just to provide a visual screen from Kellytown Road. We are proposing 2,900-square-foot minimum heated and cooled houses. The subdivision, the developer for the subdivision has built several homes in some neighboring communities, one in particular is the Evergreen subdivision. And I wanted to make mention of that and how important and positive I think that is for the developer and the builder to be one and the same. Typically, in our line of work, we sell, or we design a subdivision for a property owner or developer. They in turn sell the lots to a builder who in turn, you know, has his guys put together the plans, and it's not done in any harmony, not done with any kind of really good theme or pattern. With the developer, owner, and builder being one and the same, these guys will have a vested interest in staying involved in this project from the beginning to the very end. They'll be actively involved in the design process to make sure that the home sites that we're proposing fit with their building products that provide the best possible house location, because their ultimate goal is to sell houses and for people to be happy and satisfied with a nice lot. So they will be involved. I think that is a very positive attribute to this project, different than what we've done, than a lot of people that we've worked for in the past. As far as Stacy mentioned earlier about consistency with adjacent zonings, this is just a little different look at the property relative to the existing zonings that are adjacent to us. As you can see, we have Brook Hollow to the south, R2, Kellytown Woods to the north, Watkins Glen to the east, or yeah, east, and Evergreen to the west, and Evergreen's a subdivision. I just mentioned to you that they have just completed their last house in there. So we are compatible, we are consistent, we think will be a positive attribute to the neighboring area. I think that the product that we're going to deliver is going to be very compatible, very consistent, similarly priced, if not higher. So we feel like we have a good request in front of you tonight. I hope that you agree that this is a consistent and compatible use, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant? Do you have any questions?
This time, I'll wait until I have them here.
Okay. Anybody have any? Okay, thank you. This constitutes a public hearing. I got the clock set at 10 minutes. I'm going to have people that would like to come and speak for this rezoning, and I'll have people that would like to speak against it, oppose this rezoning. So the total time for any applicant or any, the group, will be 10 minutes. So one person can speak 10 minutes, or you can have 10 people speak for one minute. So right now, I will open the floor up, public hearing. If anybody would like to rise and approach the podium, state your name, that would be for or in favor of this rezoning. I'll repeat, anybody that's in favor of this rezoning, please come to the podium, state your name. Seeing none, hearing none. I will now open the floor up for 10 minutes to anyone that would like to approach the podium for 10 minutes that is in opposition of this request. I say again, if you're in opposition to this, now's the time to come to the podium, state your name, and you have 10 minutes. Seeing none, hearing none, I declare that the public hearing portion of the requirement has been met. If the applicant will please come back, please. Anybody got any questions for the applicant? I yield the floor to District Four.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Moore, although we don't have people here today, I've had several phone calls and quite a few emails, and I'll be honest with you, I should turn you down on pure principle. We got, this will be number four subdivisions going on in Kellytown right now. I've got one on Crumbly coming up. We've got one on East Lake, the Pig Farm people. We've got another one coming up on Airline, and then this one. That's four subdivisions inside Kellytown. And I gotta be honest with you, all these subdivisions are within two miles of my house. It's to a point now, and you know I can't turn you down for this, but when I go to Target on Saturday, I have to pack a bag lunch. Traffic is brutal. And here we are again, bringing this back up, and we're going to add to it. My schools in the area are packout, yet here we are. But as you know which way we're going, because we have precedence, I want to talk to my constituents real quick. I've been very adamant that if you're coming to Kellytown, the developer's going to meet us, the constituents, and we're not going to bend to meet the developer. In this instance, I've got Kellytown Woods, which is already zoned R2. I've got Brook Hollow, which is zoned R2. Watson Glen, which is zoned R2. Evergreen, which is zoned R2. I have to have a legal reason to turn this down, and you know that. We've talked to the attorney, and I don't really have any specific legal reason. Not terribly thrilled with it, of course. This is adding more lots, more people into a system that's already overloaded, but legally, I don't have anything. So what I'm going to do at this time, I've looked over the conditions. All the conditions are fine. I do have a question. Stacy, one of the site plans I saw had a sidewalk running along Kellytown Road. Is that still?
One of the conditions for the previous R1 required sidewalks along Kellytown Road, I don't recall the applicant proposing sidewalks in this particular instance.
All right, all right, because that doesn't fit with what's on Kellytown right now, so I couldn't do that. Are you okay with the conditions?
Yes, sir. Yes, we're fine with all of them. I'm not real sure what the difference between the nine and the 12 is. I didn't realize it was a different number, but they're all, I read them both, and I've read both sets of conditions, and they were all acceptable, so I suppose that we're fine with all of these.
Now, I did some research on your builder. I went and looked at his houses, what he's building, the product that he's building, and what I'm trying to stay away from is Bella's Landing. It is not exactly what I want to see in Kellytown. It just doesn't fit that area. So I went and looked out to your builders, and I went and looked at his houses, and his product is pretty much craftsman style, what we would like to see in Kellytown.
Good, yes.
So I'm okay with that. I looked at the house size, I'm okay with 2,900 square feet, that's fine. So I'm going to go ahead reluctantly and recommend approval of R2 with the 12 conditions as stated by staff, and that'll be my recommendation.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Somebody's second. Second, it's from District Five. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you.
Public Carrying MC-16-04, South Georgia Homes of Martiness, Georgia, requests modification of conditions of the Clear Springs Cove subdivision located near the intersection of Jackson Lake Road and Woodstock Road in Landlot 169 of the Eighth District. The property consists of 23.49 acres, and the request is to reevaluate the zoning conditions given in the rezoning case, RZ-0526. Good evening again.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. The case before you tonight is the entire Clear Springs Cove subdivision, which is located on the west side of Jackson Lake Road, just north of Keys Ferry. The original condition, number three, because the original request was for a mixture of vinyl and masonry, it required a mixture of vinyl and masonry. But this current developer would wish to develop with hardie plank, and so the condition would need to be changed to allow that developer to develop a craftsman style with hardie plank. And so therefore, staff is recommending approval of the applicant's request with particular wording, which is in your resolution and your exhibit books. Additionally, condition number nine makes reference to the requirement for a mixture of vinyl and masonry, and so we are furthering recommending that condition nine simply be stricken. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? If not, will the applicant please come forward and present your request, please? State your name for the record.
Keith Blowski, South Georgia Homes.
Okay.
Basically, all what I'm wanting to do is upgrade the subdivision, go from vinyl to allow me to do hardie instead of vinyl, to increase the value of the homes.
Anybody got any questions for the applicant?
It's not very often we have people come up to want to upgrade instead of downgrade, so we appreciate that.
Okay, no other questions, if you would. This requires a public hearing. Same rule applies, anybody that's for this request, you'll have 10 minutes total. So I'm going to open the floor up at this time. If anybody would like to be heard, come to the podium and state your name for the record. I say the second time, if you have any comments for this rezoning, not rezoning, but changes in the conditions, come forward. Seeing none, hearing none. Now, open the floor for 10 minutes for people that's in favor of this request. I say again, if you're in favor of, you've got 10 minutes, come to the podium, state your name. Seeing none, hearing none. I determine that the, declare that the public hearing session regulation requirement's been met, so if the applicant will come back forward, please.
Say again.
I yield the floor to District One.
Stacy, did you say that you wanted to strike condition nine from the conditions?
Yes. Condition nine is regarding and existing at the time, log accessory building, and it says that that would be subject to the masonry vinyl materials utilized for the single-family structure, and it's that masonry vinyl mix that we're trying to modify. And the importance of this condition seems dubious, so we just recommend that it just be stricken.
Okay. Okay, anybody got any questions for the staff or the applicant of Yule Florida District Four?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. What was it again?
Keith Blowski.
Keith, do you have to have a picture of the product that you're building out there?
Yes, sir. I didn't bring it with me. I'd given it to them, but no, sir, I did not bring it, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the modifications of condition three from a mixture of vinyl, make it a hardie board, and you can either have brick, stucco on the fronts, but you can still use vinyl in these and sides.
Okay, sir.
That's my motion.
Motion to approve. We have a motion to approve resolution, approve the modification of zoning conditions for the property located on Jackson Lake Road near the intersection of Woodstock Road, known as Clear Springs Cove subdivision in Landlot 169 of the Eighth District. Somebody's second.
Second.
Have a second from District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you.
Mr. Mosk, I just ask you one quick question, real quick on this, so it's saying a mixture of two, so on each side, so I can do a water table, I guess, is that what they want me to do around the sides and the back?
Stacy.
Yes, the condition that we had recommended would allow a craftsman style, which would be brickstone or stucco on all sides, or he could have a mixture of two of the following brickstone stucco or cement fiber board on all sides. So if he wants to have a brick water table with hardie plank, that would be in compliance with the condition as we had recommended it.
Right, because it's a mixture, okay, thank you.
Next session, public comments. Citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during a portion of this meeting. All persons wish to speak. For public comments, must say and end with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. You must complete the public comments. Speak or form, or you will not be recognized. You will be able to address the board for five minutes. Each person who addresses the board shall not make personal, impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks of any member of this board, staff, or general public. Any person who makes such remarks or who utters loud, threatening, personal abusive language or engages in any disorderly conduct which disrupts, or disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the board meeting shall, at the discretion of the chairman or the majority of the board, be barred from further audience before the board during the meeting. I take these in order that they signed up. Number one is Mr. Bill Tony. He wants to talk about public safety and county-owned property. Mr. Tony.
Bill Tony, McDonough, Georgia. I'd like to talk about the police department. This is a resolution to where y'all took countywide money, $2 million, from the police department. It was going to be a new police station. This came from countywide. I don't think Mr. Barham read it when he did it, or he voted on it, because they gave up, the other commissioners gave up a lot to Mr. Holmes. He's got his own police officer here, and I was in a little fender bender, a car hit the rear end of my car, took me 35 minutes to get a police officer out there. I had a little vandalism thing at my house, it took two hours to get a police officer there. And here, I'm looking at this gentleman right here, and Mr. Holmes has got his own police officer, and he's got two over here at the door. That's not fair, Mr. Holmes. That's not fair at all. We need some police officers on the street, not standing here for your, whatever you're doing. So I don't think that anybody's ever threatened you or done anything, not that I know of, anyway. The second thing is, your development authority, we're paying $38,000, $38,000 a year for the development authority to be in a building that we don't need. We have plenty of room at the end of the hall, they were there, they have three employees. To me, $38,000 is another police officer. That's not fair. Now, the response times on these guys, all right, everything goes back, goes back to pay. I hear that over and over and over again. Y'all not paying these guys, you're not keeping them. You're training them, they're leaving. They're training, they're leaving. You know, y'all are wasting money, and I hope Mr. Bonner, which I think he has the power to do, is to get the development authority back to the end of the hall. Is that a doable deal? You can do it. I mean, I think with me and Mr. Smith, you can answer. It ain't, that's on my time. Or, I mean, it's up to you, sir.
I would allow you to respond only. We're not going to get a dialogue between you and staff.
Okay, that's just not a dialogue. I'm just asking.
You can respond, and the clock keeps ticking.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
Fair enough. Mr. Tony, I'm not aware that I have the authority to relocate the development authority. That was, they were approved by a board action, and from my appreciation of it, the board action has to undo that particular action. We did, I did offer it to them though, early on when I got here.
Well, they have three employees, and thirty-eight thousand dollars, that's another police officer. That's a raise for this man standing here. That's raised for these guys standing over here. I mean, do the right thing. If it's your responsibility, then please do it. If it's y'all's responsibility, please do it. Bring the guys back over here. It's just the three employees. I mean, and you got nice offices down. I got pictures if you want to see them. They're beautiful offices. I'd like to be in those offices. So, but we got to get the pay raise, get some pay raise in here. But waste, don't get it. Y'all can take the money. Like I said, this is out of, I'm sure that's out of general fund for the thirty-eight thousand dollars. Let's start looking at this stuff. Start putting it together. Let's get the, the police officers. Let's get, we're short. Let me tell you, the, the police car that came out, and I've got a picture of it, police car that came out and worked my accident over on Jonesboro Road, the wear bars were showing in its tires. If we can't afford tires, and these guys run a hundred mile an hour down that interstate, y'all, y'all got problems. You need to really attend to it. If I was going through a DOT with one of my trucks, they would have granted my truck for that tire that was on that police car. Y'all need to look at it, get these guys some money. Thank you very much.
Please sit down.
I yield the floor to District Four for a comment.
I just want to make a statement. Mr. Tony, I would support moving the development authority over here.
Anybody else have any comment? The comment I got, I, I don't recall. I've only been here since January first of two thousand and thirteen. I don't recall the board ever taking board actions to move it. What I recall was that the county manager at the time just arbitrarily moved it over there. So if, if, I will check this tomorrow and just to see whether or not it did take board action. Unless the board can enlighten me on this, I think it's just an arbitrary move of the county manager at the time to, to move it. And then the county manager took about thirty-some thousand dollars that the board didn't approve and made the charge my haul on that end. So having said that, that's just my comment. Anybody else like to chime in?
Chairman, I think you're exactly right. It wasn't board action. It was the previous county manager. And I've had several conversations, even with our present county manager, about getting them relocated back over here. So I would be in favor as well.
Mr. Chairman, the reason I'm deferring is that I don't have the ability to enter into a contract, a lease arrangement, and we're paying a lease there. So somewhere along the line, it would have taken some action that's beyond the county manager's position, is the way I'm interpreting. If there, in a lease arrangement, someone else entered into it.
The chairman did not execute that contract. And, and the chairman would only execute a contract that was designated by the board.
If the board will allow me, I'll go back through the minutes. We'll get some financial records, and I'll report back to you in the morning about how we got to where we're at. I'll get it to you in the morning.
Having said that, would somebody be amenable to amending the agenda to add that item later on in the agenda? Because I think we've got three votes here that might be in favor of authorizing the, number one is the manager to move it back, number two is authorize the, won't be any documents that the chairman will have to sign. So would somebody want to move, amend the agenda and put it in an item and discuss it at this meeting?
I wouldn't do that. Yeah, I'll put that in the motion.
Okay. We have a, an amendment to the agenda to discuss the geographical location movement of the Henry County Development Authority. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Okay. All opposed, same sign. Okay, let's, let me find, okay, I'm going to make, I'm going to put this under item fourteen B. You'll modify your. That would be, I'm just going to make that a item from the county manager. Okay. Next, we'll hear from Mr. Larry Morey. Roads, spending, and nature path. I, I guess that's what it is. Is that what that's supposed to be, sir? That's supposed to be nature path? What is that?
Roads and, uh.
Path to Panola Park.
Oh, okay.
First of all, I want to say I am, I am shocked tonight. This is the first time I've seen y'all address something and, when the need arises and, and address it and move on it. And I want to say thank you for going forward with something for a change, saving some money. I'm Larry Morey. We represent Ethics in Government. And a few months ago, we talked about a bad situation with an intersection at Miller Mill and one fifty-five. Mr. Bonner, at the next meeting, you told me that you went and looked at it. And it didn't need, it wasn't as bad as you, that I said it was. Well, you hadn't done anything to it either. And here it is. And I, I do want the people to kind of see what the intersection looks like. And it isn't just on one corner, it's on three corners.
Where is this?
Miller Mill and one fifty-five. And, you know, if you can't fix it with asphalt, just go down to the loads here and get some, you know, some little concrete. It'll set up in about ten minutes and fix it with saccharic. It'll work the same. But to just have school buses and, and semis and, and stuff running off there and, and ladies with cars messing up their tires and their rims. One of the gentlemen at Middle Mill said that his wife ran off there and busted the tire away from the rim, ten o'clock at night. You know, that's just a sad situation. I would appreciate if you'd take care of that, Mr. Bonner. I would like clarification on, we talked about Panola last meeting. And the Panola original path that the county was going to participate was nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand. A few months later, it's now a million eight sixty-five. And it was going to be a hundred and fifty-seven thousand in kind, two hundred and eleven thousand pre-construction. And you gentlemen agreed to move four hundred and thirty-five from Nash Farm that was going to get a nature path. You're going to move it now to Panola. And so that's eight hundred and three thousand. And we were told that y'all were going to spend fifty percent of the cost above that. When it's doubled now, how much more are we going to spend on that path? Why can't we just bid it off and find out what the cost is going to be and bring it forward and let somebody know and stop the bleeding? We just keep spending a hundred here and a hundred there, and after a while, that's a lot of money. I'd much rather congratulate the, the board on doing a better job. Now here, this last thing I'm going to bring up is, you know, in Albany, Georgia, they passed an ordinance that says you're going to pull your britches up or they're going to tick at you. And y'all may like to look at that. And it ain't them. And I don't care if he's white, black, red, or yellow. I call that just human decency. Looked like we could pass something in the county that people can't walk around with the britches down around the knees. Albany did it, been very successful there. Looked like we could do it. I don't believe there's a mama or a daddy in here that wants their little girl, or their little boy, to see that walking down the street. And I don't believe a man would want to see his wife have to see that. This morning, I was coming by QT, and one literally had his britches almost to his ankle. He was having to hold them, running over like this. It's just decency. And if we're going, if we're going to grow and grow forward as a place for people to come and retire and live and work and play, surely we can do a better job of, you know, raising the quality of what we're doing. I admire these young men right here, Eagle Scouts. That's a, that's a great opportunity. That's what they really want to do. Our children want examples. Our children want pride. Let's help them out. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Carl Swinson. Election fraud. If I said that correctly?
Yes, you did.
It's either electric or election.
Election. Gentlemen, I'm Carl Swinson, and I live on Thurman Road in Stockbridge, Georgia. And I'm with the Henry County Board of Review. Now, what I'd like to put in front of you is something that has me extremely concerned. It was covered by Channel Eleven, and it's just brushed off, okay? But what we're looking at is some contributions made to the candidacy of Darius Patillo for the DA. And basically, what this is going to end up showing is that that position was purchased, not by anybody local donating, but by a foreign entity, foreign to Georgia. Now, maybe you don't think this is important, but I think it's important enough to, to hold a special election, because what this man did is take research. He took, let's see, the first one showed that there was in-kind contributions. Those in-kind contributions from DC happened to just coincide with the date that no, nobody could actually run for office once a candidate withdrew. And he strong-armed this candidate to withdraw. Whether that was justified or not, doesn't matter. What matters is the timing on this. And this shows some very serious underhanded dealing. And this shows some serious manipulation of the elections here in Henry County. Now, maybe you don't think this is important, but guys, here's the company. And I want you to notice something. I want you to notice that this company that provided all this information that just wiped out the competition for Mr. Patillo. Safety and Justice, I want you to look at that address. Why is that important? It's important because, hey, look who else has that address. Black voters matter. Black lives matter. Black cats matter. I don't care what it is. I'm tired of this racial implications that are being brought here to Henry County. We don't have those problems, didn't have those problems. And now, all of a sudden, we're going to get a DA that thinks that's okay. I know that Mr. Holmes has been kind of talking about, in videos, about how all of you guys are just seventy-year-olds and need to be replaced. You know, I got that. But I'm, I'm getting sick and tired of the racial divide. We're all citizens of Henry County. And I venture to say that the people on the north side, or wherever the black community might be in this county, could give a rat's rear end about race. They're all good, middle-class, working people. All of them. All of us. So please, I'd like for you to help us to get this into the realm of a special election, because this is some underhanded dealing going on right now. And I'm here to tell you, if you let this stand, you're going to be bringing racial divide into this county. You're okay with that? I'm not. I'm not. So I also want to talk about the taxes. I, I talked to our tax commissioner, and I had to put forth my homestead exemption and all that stuff a year or so ago. And since I'm sixty-five now, don't have to pay school taxes. And yet, all of a sudden, now I've got school taxes that I'm paying for. Hmm. Did you guys up the age or something? I mean, I, I'd kind of like to know, because if it affects me, chances are, it's going to affect a lot of people. Eh, it's not quite four times what I was supposed to be paying, but it's pretty doggone close. And when you're looking at people that are on social security, these are very serious, very serious increases. So if you guys wouldn't mind, take another look at how the tax structure is working here, because it isn't working for us, and all we're doing is going up, up, up. Why? Why? So that we can have police officers stand next to a, a commissioner? I don't know anybody that's ever threatened him, but there he is. Folks, we got to get real. We're all in this together. Let's do something together for a change, okay? Thank you.
Jane Eske Rutledge, tax bill. Good evening. Take your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Could you get, could you put the mic, please? Could you pull the mic to you?
You really want me to talk now?
Yes, ma'am, I want to hear you.
All right, all right, all right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners. I am Jane Eske Rutledge, a lifetime citizen of Henry County. My family roots go back to seventeen ninety-four in Stockbridge. But after eminent domain, I now reside at eight fifty-eight Honey Creek Road, McDonough, Georgia, three oh two five two, for the past twelve and a half years. After I received my tax bill, my neighbor and I reviewed the items. She's one of the millennial age. As I explained to her each line item, I realized I have no children to educate Henry County schools. The county school MO and county school bond does me no good. I have no retention pond that I made a profit on by the sale of land, yet I'm charged stormwater. Henry County Water Authority charges are on the tax bill. Why? However, I do wholeheartedly commend the Henry County Police, Sheriff, EMS, Fire, and nine-one-one system. I do receive services and safety from them on a daily basis. I have a long line of police officers in my family. I have a long line of fire chiefs of surrounding counties retired in my family. We need to give these departments much better pay, better equipment to protect them as they protect us on a twenty-four-hour day basis. And above all, we need to give them respect, which I don't feel like they're getting completely. We need more police officers on the road, but first we must get cars and hire patrolmen to fully staff our PD. I would like to know what the staffing of the police department was twenty years ago versus what it is today when our population is grown by leaps and bounds. Also, I feel that there has been a discombobulation of the commissioners in the last four years. Also, I feel that there has been a discombobulation of the commissioners in the last four years. I would very much, as a taxpaying citizen, like for the chairman and all commissioners to take legal steps to rescind House Bill five fifty-four immediately. The duties assigned to the creation of the possession of the chairman of the Henry County Board of Commissioners was voted on by referendum, that's spelled R-E-F-E-R-E-N-D-U-M, in nineteen ninety by a two-third majority vote. I feel that I should not have to support county commissioners that took my voting rights away by the Henry County delegation that they engaged with in the state Capitol with no input from citizens to change this referendum from nineteen ninety. I've always been a community activist. If this change was needed, then a change would have had to follow the protocol of the citizens of Henry County by a referendum that would have been placed on the ballot and voted on by the people. You cannot just go in and arbitrarily change a referendum. If citizens desired to change the duties of the Henry County Chairman of the Board of Commissioner, then the protocol would have been to vote on a referendum. If it passed, so be it, change it. My voting rights were violated by the passing of House Bill five fifty-four, and I feel that my civil rights were violated also. You need to realize, in the coming election, Mrs. Carlotta Harold, Mr. Don Henderson, or Mrs. June Woods deserve to put into place with the rescinding of House Bill five fifty-four. When they are elected, whichever is elected, they deserve to serve under the wishes of the citizens, not the delegation. When we had the meeting right here, the bill had done been signed, it was on the governor's desk. It was just a hoax meeting that we had. I don't go for this kind of junk. We have children sitting out here that are in the scouts. We need to be big guys and do the right thing and put our support where the people want it. Thank you.
I would like to make a comment. Uh, House Bill five fifty-four is exactly what you said it was. It was by referendum in nineteen ninety. At the stroke of a pen, it was drastically changed the former government in Henry County. Now, having said that, the test case would be if sitting elected officials could trump a referendum by the stroke of a pen at the Gold Dome. The, one of the items you mentioned, the two-mill water tax from Henry County Water Authority, was placed by the voters by voter referendum. So, that being the case, the General Assembly could, at the stroke of a pen of the governor, change the, the composition of the two-mill, if you think that can help and hold your breath. Okay? All the SLOSH programs, one, two, three, and four, is by referendum. Okay? The deal is, is once the people voted, you cannot change not one iota of the, the project that's on the list. The only thing you can do, you can take, like if you got a priority one, two, three, four on the street, and before you start accumulating monies, uh, the priority changes. You got one street for some reason or another, used to be priority number one, now it's, you got number four is now, uh, priority number is, is greater than number one, so you can move four to one, but you have to, you have to put one down in the same list. So, the, the issue I had, and I don't really have a dog in this hunt now, because I'm just the chairman, and the chairman got neutered, which was me. But the deal is, it, the test case, and I think legal minds would tell you this. If the General Assembly can take one, referendum and change it at the stroke of a pen, then they can change any voter referendum and change it at the stroke of a pen. So, I yield the floor, and I might like to go with that. I wanna comment.
Okay, that completes that portion. Uh, consent agendas. The following agenda items shall be considered on the consent agenda. Before voting on the consent agenda items, the chair will provide opportunity to add or delete items. Risk management. Resolution to approve and adopt the revised Henry County Zero-Tolerance Drug and Alcoholing Test Policies. District Attorney. Budget Amendment Number Seven to amend FY twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen budget to transfer funds to District Attorney's salaries and benefits account from transfer out of special court account. State Court. Resolution approving, correction, resolution granting approval for the Henry County DUI Drug Court to apply for supplementary grant for the state of Georgia Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Coordination Council in fiscal, uh, year seventeen. Uh, Henry County DOT, Resolution Authorizing Speed Humps to be installed within the Cherokee Ridge subdivision. That ends the consent agenda. If any commissioner would like to add to or remove any item I just read, please do so now. Otherwise, if somebody move, we accept the consent agendas as, correction, the consent resolutions as read. So move. Have a motion from District Three. Second District One, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your hands, so move. Uh, next item is a Budget Amendment Number Ten to amend the fiscal year twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen budget to increase use of fund balance to transfer funds to capital asset funds to the expansion of the probate parking lot and renovation to the interior. That resolution at one time carried a five-hundred-thousand-dollar, uh, budget amendment. I'm gonna yield the floor to the manager, and we, we're not gonna exactly, we're gonna take the half million out, but the county manager is gonna explain as two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars that we found in SLOSH money. And we can use the SLOSH money. And that way, we will not be voting on the, uh, the resolution to amend the fiscal year budget. But, uh, the county manager will explain exactly how we're gonna move and what direction. I yield the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board, um, appreciate you allowing me to talk to you about this evening. The capital improvement came about from several meetings with Mr. Purvis and, um, and some other folks from the facility maintenance and meeting with staff over at probate. Uh, the probate court is in shambles. You can't throw a cat in the room, so, you know, we knew we had a problem on it. It's been a problem for a while. We've had sewage backups in there. Um, we have security issues in the building. But when the issue came up, we had met with a probate judge and had sketched out a few things of what was, um, proposed by the judge. At that time, I wasn't aware that another group had come in, a consultant was brought in and had done some sketches. Uh, also, staff had done some sketches, and I'll share a few of those now to let you know what the constraints were and what has been addressed so far. This is the building, it's on Sim Street. Uh, this is a product of DOT, I think Mrs. Stroud put this together for us. One of the compliance issues here is we're about fourteen or sixteen spaces short of parking to be compliant with the use and the number of people that are in there. Uh, so this added eight spaces, and that was done, um, by DOT again. And going back and meeting with the judge, we had some other internal construction that needed to be addressed, um, that she had, uh, drawn out, and apparently the consultant had worked with her on some of this. But we had pieces all over the county. Uh, our project, uh, construction manager had some issues, or had some drawings and had some notes. The judge had some drawings, SLOSH had some drawings, we've had comments. So today, I spent most of the morning pulling these things together and trying to find a composite picture of where we're at, so we could address this significant hit, uh, to fund balance. Uh, there was, and it still remains, about two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars that's available that the board approved by resolution some time back. This is the minutes from the meeting where you did it, and I'm acting today off of the arrow point on it. It says that the probate building improvements, priority one, two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars. That money's intact, I've confirmed that it's available for the list of the things that were there. We've been focusing on, and I believe erudently, we've been focusing on item one, replacing the roof, when in fact, all of that falls under that category. I'm operating now to accommodate something that we needed to do, uh, months ago, where we can actually bring a consultant onboard, an engineer onboard, to find out what these costs are to reconfigure the building to serve its intended purposes as probate court. The judge has proposed a very small courtroom in the corner of the building. It would essentially be this corner, uh, moving files around, moving people around within the building such that she can have her courtroom and get the adequate staff in there. The entry's being changed, uh, to go over to the front. And the stripes you see on what the top of the screen is, uh, we think we can get an additional eight parking spaces there, but we're still short. Uh, counted them up, and for what we're there, um, we're still not compliant with the building code in our own standards. And we're the city of McDonough. So with that, uh, we appointed Mr. Burkhalder to be our project manager on this, and he's been instructed to go forth by me, following the notions that I have the authority to fund and engineer plans to show all the needed improvements for this site. This may be some property acquisition to account for the parking. It certainly will have a cost estimate to come back for the board to consider for construction. And if we don't have enough in the two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars, the, I would be coming back to the board and asking for some additional funding for construction, but we would know the cost. Right now, the five-hundred-thousand, I wouldn't wanna leave out on the table, but I also don't wanna leave a constitutional officer not knowing that we have a commitment, we're gonna go to construction. Commissioners, this thing has been going on for three years. Uh, now we've got a map, uh, we're gonna go ahead and bring the design and the cost back to you. We're gonna expend the money in SLOSH to what the citizens of Henry County indicated they wanted to have there. And if we need some additional construction dollars, we'll come back to you. But this project's moving on under the authority y'all giving me under the SLOSH. Also, one of the big issues that I mentioned earlier, which has caused more problems, is the sewage that is there. And Commissioner Barham opened my eyes to some problems that were contingent on work that had been done in the past. We've got some substandard plumbing underground. So we're gonna map that out, uh, Mr. Purvis has done a locate. We're gonna provide that information to the engineer on it and figure out what's the best route to get us the proper sewage in this location, get us the proper fire suppression, get us the par, proper, uh, parking, to bring this building to compliance and be able to serve as a probate, uh, office as y'all as intended. Board has any questions for me, I'm available.
Anybody have any questions? I yield the floor to District Four.
Mr. Barner, my question is, is, is it the intent to keep probate court there from now on? Or what's, what's long-term plan here?
In my, in my opinion here, the, all the court systems are now under a program that was initiated by the Board of County Commissioners and the judges to do a space analysis for judicial needs for the years, forty-some years out, we're looking on. We've had two meetings, uh, Mr. Simmons has asked for a meeting this Thursday to kinda keep moving us on. We've met all the deliverables that we're supposed to. But in meeting with the judges, we had a list, when they put out the proposal, that wasn't as fully complete as we know it now. So it's intent to try to have housing for all the judicial functions in these one or two locations, whatever it comes. That's how I'm contemplating, and that's how the committee is approaching it at this point in time. But we're three, maybe four years out, and as much as I hate to admit it, we're space-poor in a lot of places. I would ask the board to go into the probate court tomorrow. You, I said early, canceling a cat, and they're people on top of each other. I have a question on whether we're compliant on several fronts in that building, and I'm gonna move the project up to the front, so that we appointed a manager today, we're gonna go forward on it.
When you said four or five years, do you mean for that report?
No, sir, I think that we've got a twenty-six-week fuse when the contractor put this out. And for the benefit of the, the public, this is a, a study that was initiated by the judicial, the judges, uh, to determine what Henry County's needs are for court facilities for the next thirty years. It's a hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand dollars, I think the Board of County Commissioners has invested in this in your current year budget. It had a schedule of twenty-six weeks where we were to get the report back and what their conclusions are of space needs for the thirty years. Now, at that point, we'll have an idea what those space needs may cost. We'll have to decide where that would be at. Then we gotta start talking, and the commissioner's looking me dead in the eyes. This is gonna be a financing issue, I don't see us being able to, I don't see us being able to, uh, fund this on cash. Because commissioners, quite frankly, this is a huge capital investment. You spent five hours with me yesterday talking about capital investment. We're looking at deferrals. Um, as much as, uh, has been put off, we're behind on a curve on many, many things. We could just go down the list that has been kicked down the road for financial reasons that every jurisdiction I'm aware of in the United States had, had a list of deferrals. Where ours are coming home to roost with us, and we're having to deal with it. This is one that the judges saw, they're looking thirty years out to the future to determine what court needs, space needs would be, and it's coming. We need to combine that with the other capital work we're doing throughout the year. In case y'all didn't pick up on it, yesterday, y'all started capital budgeting again. So we're going to work through these things. Uh, if it can be combined, great. But to answer your question specifically, at the end of twenty-six weeks, we're supposed to have a report that tells us what our space analysis would be and what a general cost should be for those. All right, thank you.
From SLOSH?
No, sir, you did not.
Okay.
We don't know where it is yet. Is that a possibility? By the time we are ready for construction, Commissioner Holmes, maybe an infrastructure SLOSH would be appropriate. At this point in time, we're looking at financing.
Before I recognize District Three to address some parking, uh, I'm gonna, I got me a little sketch here. And I, if, if somebody can correct me, uh, in, in missing this, but in the, with the previous manager, there, there was half-million dollars set aside by whom I don't know. But the plan was, the first thing, they built a, a new courtroom at State Court that was funded by the half-million, and that wasn't approved by the board, okay? The Forty Atlanta Street, it had three entities in there. It had, um, ADA, the, uh, Mediation Center, Juvenile, and something else, okay? The Juvenile was gonna move over to the old City Hall of McDonough. The ADA was, was gonna move over to the Aubrey Harvey Building. The Drug Task Force Testing was gonna move to the Aubrey Harvey Building. That would empty up Forty Atlanta Street. Once Forty Atlanta Street was empty, the probate court was gonna move, is gonna renovate Forty Atlanta Street, 'cause it's bigger, and it was, at one time, it was State Court. They had two big courtrooms and all that. They was gonna move probate over to Forty Atlanta Street, and that would put that court in proximity to the judicial system. Okay? The, once, there was some modifications to the probate court, then the Juvenile people, which is Angela Craig, whichever her department is, was gonna move over to and take that building. And that would, uh, numerous things. One is, her office would have room for expansion. The probate court would have room for expansion. And then these other entities, uh, was, uh, you didn't need a whole lot of space. You needed a bathroom and, uh, to drug test in the court system, 'cause when the judges, uh, give you restriction, they, you get tested from, from time to time. Now, e- everything was kinda moving in that direction. And then, the Forty, correction, three forty-five Phillips Drive, ended up with some significant structural damage, okay? So, we didn't know that at the time, but the significant thing was, it was a significant amount of black mold. And I understand, when I got involved in it, it had been there for several years. But anyway, quickly, all the people, the election people, was moved over to the Forty Atlanta Street because it was empty and it would accommodate. If you've seen, uh, they got about three or four hundred, uh, vote machines that have to be in a controlled environment and things of that nature. So, the, what has happened to, and kinda not answer Commissioner Prince's long-term thing, that was supposed to be the plan. Now, we've got the election, we're not gonna do anything with that this whole year, because we got a major election cycle coming up, we recognize that, so it is what it is. So the, I don't know, in this evaluation from the judicial system that they in the process of, I don't know exactly how they looking at, at all that. But, uh, probate is, is gonna expand, they, they, they out of room now. So that kinda gives you, uh, and then, in the meantime, we took one of the entities, the agencies, out, that used to be contracted out, and they was renting a place, so we, uh, had some, uh, problems with that. So the board approved putting that back into a department, which you had for many, many, many years. So now, we took the old bank building, which is no- So now, we took the old bank building, which is no longer available for anybody's use. So they in the old bank building. Now, having said that, I'm going to yield the floor to Commissioner Barham, who is the, the Utility Public Works Director for City of McDonnell, since Moby Dick was a minnow. So he can, if you put the, the map back up that showed the parking, he, he can, him and I went over there and looked, and he got his tape out, and he might have my, so I'm going to yield the Florida District Three.
We've talked about it before, London, about in the rear of the building.
It's the median rear.
Yeah, on the rear.
That's the side. That's the south side, the rear.
Yeah, the rear's right here.
This is, this is, this is air conditioning right here. This would be the back of the building.
That's the back of the building.
But the entrance of the building is over here, Chairman.
There's a fence line right there, and, and we talked about cutting into that bank and building a small retaining wall and putting some more angle parking there. And I think on the side, I'm not sure exactly where the property line is, but I think maybe that mark is kind of the property line. We talked about doing the same thing. So angle parking would give you quite a bit more parking than what we got. But if y'all would, if you'd just look into that and see if we could add some additional parking in the rear.
Commissioner, in our notes, Judge Powell has reached out to the property that is, if you'll just follow me, I'm calling this the rear of the building. There is a lot. It's kind of an L-shaped lot that is configured here. I don't know if, how far the conversations went, but that property is available. So we looked at, maybe could we notch it or go back and acquire the property and bring the full parking this way so that we'd have this, this end taken care of? I would rather have done that than put this up front. That's just my druthers on that, but we're just trying to figure out the best way to go about it. The consultant, we're going to make best use of that. If it turns out that the best option is to acquire some property, then we're going to have to look at that option. It's an internal and it's an external thing that I've committed to making sure we're compliant on. But commissioners, the intent all along has been to fund the project. This is the $220,000 that is still there. This was the project estimate that was developed sometime back in the list at $570,000. So essentially, we're just going back and picking the project up with the 220 now, and if that is still a reasonable approximation of the renovations we're looking at, that would be what I'd be coming back to you, not necessarily to $500,000. But we need to get the numbers together so that the board can have some sense of where we're spending this. This is a capital expenditure. But Commissioner Holmes, $200,000 of it is sploshed.
Yes, number one, as I suggest officially, we take no action on the budget amendments in the book, and we can do that. And then, I don't think that based on what you showed us, we have to take any action because it, it's already allowed by the current, so I, I know.
If nothing else, I'm advising the board that I've, we found a project that is in our purview to continue on. I'm going to take the steps as we normally would. We're looking at procurement. We're looking at design. But we're moving on. The project's been put on the table for three years. So now, we've got the funding. I'm not coming to you and asking for any money. I'm going to use the splosh money for what it was intended to. We're going to get the best buck, bang for our buck that we possibly can.
Based on.
But we're not going to be another three years.
In a, in a typical splosh program, the only time, the first time we see it is when they bring it to us for the bits. Okay? In this case, obviously, to spend that, the board still has to approve any expenditure program to release the money. So this, this is consistent with past practice on all the roads and capital projects, fire stations, and all that, so.
Yes, sir. I haven't spent any money yet.
The reason I say that, I don't think the board, we're not spending money now, so the board would.
When we bring the three quotes or ever what direction procurement sends me to get our consultant on board, that'll be the first expenditure. If it's under $50,000, you won't hear from me until I've got you a price structure of what we're doing. The intent is to make certain we capture what the judge is looking for and what the architect or the engineering group would deem appropriate for the next four or five years of occupancy there. Irrespective, we want it to be compliant when the probate does move out of this. This property is a prime piece of property. I want to make sure I've got something that's sellable and it's compliant, has no clouds of it in five or six years, whenever that time we need to dispose of the property, or if we move somebody else back in, a county function. Yes, sir?
I've identified that some of the funds are coming from splosh. Can you identify which splosh is coming from?
It is splosh three.
Okay. And then, we had a presentation yesterday by the election.
I'm sorry? They're holding up more fingers back there. It's splosh four.
So we had a presentation yesterday by the, by the Board of Elections, and, you know, their problems are just as serious. Do you plan on using any of those funds to correct some of those issues?
No splosh dollars, no, sir. The Board of Elections has presented another set of opportunities, and Hutch Purvis and Chairman Smith are the only persons I've ever heard be able to describe the shell game we did to move everybody around. 345 Phillips is coming back to the board. We're going to have to look at it again from the standpoint of moving on. I committed to have the board a question answered today, and we've got it. The engineered loading on that building on the current code is 100 pounds per square foot, and we did not have it evaluated for that. We have instructed our, our folks to go on out with that contractor, bring him in to address the stringer questions, to address the Joyce questions, the fatigue questions, and is the rest of the perimeter envelope suitable for rebuild, a renovation at the 15,000 square foot or the 30,000 square foot in this location or someplace else. I, I think is what I said when we first started talking about 345, is that we need the space sooner than later. And it changes the game on several other steps that the chairman has walked through many times with me. For example, if we are able to do 345 at the 15,000 square feet and get it in there for a meg in three, that's going to be able to move elections back to where they're from. That lets the elections building at 40 Atlanta become available for someone else. At one time, the judge was going to move there and was poised, the probate court was going to move in there until we had some other structural failures. So it, it's still in play. I won't be spending any splosh dollars there unless the judge moves and we could move out of that, then she can spend the $220,000 at her discretion relative to the ordinance that the board made. So it could be at some other building. But right now, in the short term of things, I'm 18 months, maybe thereabouts, maybe two years, if we were able to start tomorrow and rehab 345. Could be less, but I've got a lot of work to do, and I want to make certain that if the board elects to do this, I've got a sound engineering program. And my commitment to the board was, this is a 30-year solution. We're not looking for a 10-year fix. If we can go to the 30,000 square foot, it makes a significant address to the space needs we have currently in hand. But first thing, first step here is let's get the building certified for what we can do with it and what it's going to cost. So that, that's the history on 345, but Commissioner Holmes, it's coming back to you. We're getting pressed for more space. I, I don't know what the next shell game would be if another building went down. I don't know how we'd reorder things. We'd certainly be leasing or making some other provisions, like Station Eight. Right now, we're looking at what are the temporary housing and the apparatus structure that we would use at Station Eight, should the engineering report come back and indicate a need to do so.
I think what I recall was the reason they didn't spend the $220,000 on that building was the fact that it's going to save it and spend that $220,000 renovating 40 Atlanta Street.
Very well could be.
I, I think that was, I think that was the issue. So what had happened when, when that fruit basket turnover, everything was running relative good until 345 come into play, and, but 345 right now is a moot issue until we are presented the further evaluation of the steel fatigue and the cement and all that. So that's what we approved yesterday. So I, I didn't expect anybody to come in here tonight, and, but I think if we'd had the reports that everything was okay, I think we could have moved on it, but it.
But it was not. My commitment to the board was to find out what the loading was.
Anybody else have any questions?
If not, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Community Development Block Grant, Public Care to Consider Approval of the Proposed Federal Year 2015 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report in Authorization to Submit the Report to U.S. Department of Housing. Shannon, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners of the Board. Our 2015 Community Development Block Grant Program year ended on June 30 of 2016, and as recipients of CDBG program funding, Henry County is required to submit to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development a consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, commonly known as the CAPER. The CAPER provides HUD and the residents of Henry County an opportunity to evaluate the overall progress of the CDBG program in the carrying out of priorities and specific objectives identified in its consolidated plan and annual action plans. It also describes actions, changes, accomplishments during the 2015 year resulting from the use of Community Development Block Grant Program funds. Staff published a public notice for the draft CAPER in the Wednesday, August 31, 2016 edition of the Henry Daily Herald to announce the public comment period. Copies of the draft CAPER were made available in various public locations throughout the county, as well as on the county's website. To date, no, no comments have been received. During program year 2015, a total of 11 projects were completed in addition to the rehabilitation of 10 single-family owner-occupied housing, housing rehab projects. Previously, in the agenda item, I stated 12. Two of those were reported in the 2014 CAPER. So those would be a duplication. That correct number is 10 housing rehabs. A total of 1 million, 1.1 million, just over 1.1 rather, $1,185,000 was expended in 2015 of CDBG funding. The table here provides a look at those specific activities where funding was expended, was expended rather. It includes those completed activities as well as the activities that are still ongoing, and it also shows the beneficiaries or the accomplishments of those various activities. This is a public hearing, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anybody, any commissioner have any comments for staff? If not, I'm going to open the floor up for 10 minutes. Anybody that would like to, more yay or nay for or oppose the application for this approving the fiscal year consolidated annual report? So having said that, I'll open up the floor if anybody would like to be heard at this time. If you come to the podium, state your name for the record. I say again, if you have any comments you'd like to place before the board, is do it now. See none, hear none. I declare that the public hearing portion requirement has been met, and you have before you a resolution, Henry County Board of Commissioners Resolution approving the fiscal 2015 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for the Community Development Block Grant. Somebody moving that direction? Have a motion District One. Second, District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Public Safety, Henry County Police Department Resolution authorizing the purchase of 30 2017 Dodge Chargers from Aitkins Ford Dodge Jeep Chrysler for the Police Department and a budget amendment in the amount of $700,477 in general funds. Good evening. You're not major, keep going, but we'll take you, we'll take you deputy chief.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Commissioner, tonight, we come before you to request 30 Dodge Chargers to meet operational needs for replacement of the police department's fleet. We further recommend that the vehicles be purchased from Aitkins Ford under state contract bid for $700,477. It's further recommended that these funds be taken from general fund balance and moved to the police department capital expenditures.
Anybody have any questions or comments? I yield the Florida District Four.
Deputy Chief, how you doing?
Good, sir.
Lean to the microphone, we can't hear you.
All right, sir.
Would you take the citizens through what's going on with our fleet right now, what, what we're looking at, what we're facing here, and why we're continually seem like buying cars?
Yes, sir. We do have a fleet management program. What the police department's done, we've looked at how long these cars last, and we've gotten with our fleet manager for the county, and in conjunction with staff, we've looked at how far can we push these cars? We've looking at, we look at 150,000 miles, and the cars, the police cars need to go, be deadlined. Currently, the police department has 54 cars that are above 150,000. So we're asking to take a bite out of that, asking for 30 to try to manage this fleet. If we don't buy any new cars, by next year, we're going to have 78 cars over 150,000. In two years, we're going to have 105 cars. When we start talking about outfitting 105 cars, we're talking about in a neighborhood of four, over $4.5 million. If we need to keep up in these small increments to try to keep, manage our fleet and keep them going, if we don't, then we have to come to the board and maybe ask for tens of millions of dollars, which is too much for the county to handle. So this is a small bite in the right direction. It's still not completely what we need, but we understand the financial responsibility to board, so that's why we're asking for 30 at this time.
Now, one last thing, you know, I have had several constituents bring up, that they have vehicles with over 150,000 miles. Why can't we just keep driving ours? Can you take us through real quick why and what the need is, and kind of explain the differences in between a civilian vehicle and a police cruiser?
Absolutely. I, I personally have a car at home that has 300,000 miles on, and we still drive it. But what we ask these police officers to do is totally different than what we ask for civilians to do. These police officers have to respond to the crime in progress, respond to persons needing help. We ask them to drive on the roads in excess of over 100 miles an hour. Nationwide, the standard is about 100,000 miles when these cars should be deadlined. Some agencies do it as low as 75,000 miles. A lot of them do it 125. The only reason we even push ours to 150,000 miles, because we do have a take-home car policy. These officers treat this car like it's their own. That's the only reason why they last so long. And we also try to do it nationwide, try to do it less than five years. We can push ours almost six, because the officers do take such good care of these cars. But we can't push them beyond that and forth. Just like we're talking about the buildings and metal fatigue, these cars being driven that hard after that amount of time need to be scrapped, because we could have catastrophic failure to these cars. And that's dealing with fleet services and all the, all the people that say they need to go.
Thank you, chief. Yield the floor.
Anybody else got any comment? I yield the Florida District One. Fleet maintenance, maintain all our.
Yes. The county fleet service maintains the police cars.
They do a big security job. Officers take care of the cars, one thing, but Jody's crew at Fleet is keeping all of our wheels rolling right now. Y'all know I got lots of mileage on everything we got, so I tip my hat to the Fleet and Jody Stroud, I'm sorry, Jody Swords every day.
So on the, on the tires, I think we just had a comment about some ball tires on the cars? That concern?
Yes. We don't have any issues with getting tires from Fleet. He keeps us prepared. The vehicles do get inspected by the supervisors. Maybe one was in need and needs to get up there. There's never been an issue with Fleet getting us any equipment to keep them on the roads. So I'll, I'll check into that, make sure we do another inspection and get them up there. That's never been a problem with Fleet. Jody does do some amazing things with these older cars to keep them running.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No, we have a resolution to boot, Board of Commissioners question purchase of 30 Dodge Chargers for the police department and the associated budget amendment. Move to approve. Have a motion from District Four, second from District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move.
Thank you, commissioners.
Henry County Fire Department Resolution awarding a bid for the remounting and refurbishing of two emergency medical vehicles and budget amendment. Chief, good, good evening.
Good evening. Can you hear me? We're requesting for the board to award a bid for the remounting and refurbishing of two emergency medical vehicles. Sealed bids were solicited to remount and refurbish two emergency vehicles for the Henry County Fire Department, and three vendors submitted bids for this purchase as indicated on the attached bid tabulation. And Custom Truck and Body Works, Inc. of Woodbury, Georgia, has submitted the lowest bid in the amount of $222,176 to remount two emergency medical vehicles. Departmental personnel recommend award to Custom Truck and Body Works Departmental personnel recommend award to Custom Truck and Body Works, Inc. And the Henry County Fire Department is also requesting $52,824 for equipment needed on both remounted ambulances. And a budget amendment from the General Fund is required in which $275,000 is transferred from the General Fund balance to the Fire Department line item for vehicles and associated equipment. We're asking that the Board of Commissioners award bid, the bid, 1710 Custom Truck and Body Works LLC in the amount of $222,176 to remount and refurbish two emergency medical vehicles, as well as approved a budget amendment that transfers $275,000 to the Fire Department line item for vehicles and associated equipment.
Anybody have any questions for the chief? I yield the floor to District Four.
Are these the two buses that we had talked about before, that we were trying to get the prices on?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any further questions? If not, we have a resolution in the book, Board of Commissioners' question, a, to award a bid for the remount and refurbishing of two emergency medical vehicles.
Move to approve.
Have a motion District Four. Second District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Special purpose local option sales tax. Resolution approving the purchase of sport field lighting for Cochrane Park in Stockbridge, Georgia using budgeted SPOS four funds. Mr. Burke, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. The voters of Henry County approved the SPOS four referendum, which included funds for Cochran Park improvements in Stockbridge. There's a need to replace the existing sports field lighting at Cochran Park. Techline Sports Lighting has provided a proposal to furnish and install sports field lighting at Cochran Park in the amount of $498,200. The scope of the work includes furnishing, installing 23 poles, 120 light fixtures, and all associated hardware, wiring, that's required for this turnkey project. The SPOS department is requesting authorization to use budgeted SPOS four funds to purchase sports field lighting for Cochran Park using TIPS contract number 7022516 in the amount of $498,200, and funds are available in the calendar year 2016 Cochran Park account.
Anybody have any questions for... I yield the floor to District Five.
Ron, this is, uh, well overdue. I don't think the current lights even work. So, um, thank you so much for bringing this to the board today. Thanks so much.
Anybody else have any questions? I yield the floor to District Four.
I'll echo what District Five said, and Commissioner Holmes, I played football there back in the day, which was a Tuesday, by the way, and I don't think those lights have been replaced since then. Yeah, it's been a while. I noticed, Ron, these are metal highlighted lights. Is any, I see a photometric plan. Have we looked around at the area to make sure we're not getting any light bleed over on any residential areas?
Commissioner, when they, uh, they do their, uh, the plan, okay, that's taking the, whatever I call light pollution, okay? They take that into account, make sure that, you know, that that's not, that's not going to happen. And if it does, once they do it, they'll get out with their light meters, once everything is set up. And if anything needs to be adjusted, okay, it'll be adjusted appropriately, so we're not getting the light bleed over.
Okay. Just didn't want to get complaints, so, thank you.
Any further questions? Resolution in the book, Board of Commissioners approving the purchase of sport field lighting for Cochran Park in Stockbridge, Georgia using budgeted SPOS four funds.
So move.
Have a motion from District Five.
Second.
Second District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move.
Thank you.
Resolution approving the Henry County Water Authority relocation estimated cost for Old Highway Three. Mr. Romero.
Good evening, Chairman, Board members. Old Highway Three at Stair道81 is a designated SPOS three project. Due to the construction of Old Highway Three at Stair道81, it will be necessary for Henry County Water Authority to relocate a portion of its facilities. The estimated cost to relocate the Henry County Water Authority facilities is $203,516.86. The water relocation estimate is about 8.8% of the total construction cost. Funding for the utility relocation is available in the project budget.
Anybody have any questions? Have a resolution to the Henry County Board of Commissioners approving the highway correction to Henry County Water and Sewer. Kind of keep, they changed the name up to Henry County Water Authority, but it used to be Henry County Water and Sewer. The County Water Authority utilities located, relocated estimated cost for Old Highway Three at SR81. Somebody moving that direction?
Move to approve.
Have a motion from District Three.
Second.
From District One. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Resolution approving the utility relocation agreement between Henry County and Georgia Power Company, same location, Georgia Three, no, yeah, same location, Georgia Three and SR81.
Yes, Chairman. Same project as before. This is now for the utility relocation agreement between Henry County and Georgia Power for the relocation. The estimated cost for the Georgia Power Company facilities is $291,243. Georgia Power Company requests reimbursement of, for 100% of the actual relocation cost. The power relocation estimate is at 12.59% of the total construction cost. Funding for the utility relocation is available in the project budget. Staff recommends approval of this utility agreement.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Resolution in the book, Henry County Board of Commissioners approving the utility relocation agreement between Henry County and Georgia Power Company for Old Highway Georgia Three and Eighty-One. Have a motion District Three.
Second.
Second District Five. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Next item, I recommend that we amend the agenda to remove, uh, the resolution approving supplementary agreements for design of Amalee Road, Thirbury Road, Elliott Road, Atlanta Road, Thurmond Road, Flat Rock Road, and McDonough Parkway 42 to SR155 SP4310. And I understand that we have some issues, somebody has some issues with that. Is that, is that correct?
Chairman, this was the one we took at the last meeting to be able to accommodate and talk to the individual board members about our MS4 compliance.
And this hasn't taken place, right?
It has not.
Okay. Well, somebody moved amend the agenda to, uh, uh, remove this item.
So move.
Have a motion District Five.
Second.
Second District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So move. It's been removed. Resolution approving a budget amendment accepting funding from the Georgia Department of Transportation for SR81 widening, PI number 0015089er. And Rock Quarry Road widening, PI number 001509er0. Good evening again.
Good evening, Chairman, again, and Board members. SPOS four was approved by voters in November 2013. Stair道81 widening is an approved 50/50 cost share District One and District Three SPOS four projects. Rock Quarry Road widening is an approved District Four SPOS four project as well. Project framework agreement between Henry County and the Georgia Department of Transportation for Stair道81 widening was approved July 19th, 2016 per Resolution 16 dash 200 by the Board of Commissioners, as well as the project framework agreement between Henry County and Georgia Department of Transportation for the Rock Quarry Road widening was also approved on July 19th, 2016 per Resolution 16 dash 198. A budget amendment in the amount of $599,740 is needed for Stair道 widening, Stair道81 widening District One, and in the same amount of $599,740 for Stair道81 widening for District Three, accepting the GDOT funding commitment of up to 1.2 million. In the same manner, a budget amendment is in the amount of $1,171,484 is needed for Rock Quarry Road widening, accepting the GDOT funding commitment of up to 1.2 million. Staff recommends approval of this budget amendments.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Not, resolution, Henry County Board of Commissioners approving a budget amendment accepting funding from the Georgia Department of Transportation for SR81 widening, PI 0015089er to Rock Quarry Road widening, PI number 001509er0. Somebody moving that direction?
Move to approve.
Have a motion from District Four.
Second.
Second District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So move.
Thank you.
Resolution authorizing termination reimbursement payment of $140,74043 to Swininger Management LLC approved, approval of the budget amendment number nine. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is the closeout documents for the reimbursables to the former management team at Cottonfields Golf Course. This is accumulation of capital and certainly other expenditures they had in a course of several months. I think the dates are on there pretty clear. So we've listed it by category, we've listed how we've done it. This has been before the board before. I think it was back in December, or maybe January, well, maybe as late as May, when we first started contemplating exiting of the contract. So the board has seen this numbers before, it hadn't changed. It was much higher at one time. Mr. Oletta went through and cleaned up some of the requests that were in there, made sure they were assigned to correct places. And this is the best as we know it right now. We recommend you go ahead and disburse the check out of General Fund for 1474043. Mr. Jogstadter will be preparing a letter of separation. This is our final transaction with the management team, previous management team. So we want to make certain that this is a clear separation of what our final arrears are to them and what they owe us. Nothing else to be leaving, and nothing else will be coming.
Let me ask you this. I, I noticed on this part of the executive summary, we paying him 6% interest?
That's correct.
On the unpaid? How, how, explain that to me?
When we presented this to the board, and the board hasn't approved it.
The board what?
The board has not approved the 6%.
Well, let me ask you this, before we move in that direction. Which board has to approve this?
I'm going to say the Henry County Board of County Commissioners.
Okay. The agreement that was, it says in the resolution, it says the Henry County Office Industrial Park Corporation and Henry County Development Authority entered into this agreement. So right now, we, we don't, we don't have a dog in a hunt, right? It, it nowhere in there does it say the Henry County Board of Commissioners.
In that, I'm going to have to defer to the attorney's comments from the back, is that the board of county commissioners at that time were seated as that entity.
I don't think they were at that time, but this was...
Take a shot.
The Board of Commissioners has to authorize the expenditure of the funds. Mr. Bonner can't write that check unless the Board of Commissioner authorizes him to write that check.
I don't think the Board of Commissioners can authorize that unless the Board of Directors of the Office Industrial Park Corporation makes that recommendation. Would that be a correct statement?
Well, no, sir, because the, the management company terminated the agreement. So the, the agreement has been terminated by the management company, and this will close it out. So I don't think the office, I don't think the, the corporation really needs to act other than to accept the termination once, once we have the signature from the management company accompanying the check, the, the corporation would at that point accept the termination.
Is the Development Authority, are they on board with this?
They, they are, and they, you know, the way the, the agreement between us and the Development Authority was written is that we have all the managerial, they just, it's really our agreement, not their agreement. So, but they don't have to take any formal action on it.
Well, let me ask you this. If, if the management team opt out what you just said, then why don't we get into all this interest? I'm just, I don't understand that part.
I wasn't involved in the calculation of the monies. I can't, I can't speak to how the number came to be.
We populated the itemized list of the things that were there. The 6% was proposed by the management team. It has not been approved by the board. Back in December, now, I, I hope I'm saying the right months on this, that, that was what was presented to you. The board has not approved this. This is just the same document that was assembled back then.
So if, I don't know, I, I think we need to pay everybody that we owe. But, and, and I'm, I'm maybe the only one that's having some issues with this, but if they opt out, why, why do we have to go 6%? Who generated the 6, who, who come up with that figure? Is this the, is this the amortization charge?
Yes, sir. It's been amortized, and the 6% flows through this.
This is what they want to opt out, and this is what they want?
Yes, sir.
I would expect, Mr. Chairman, that the, most of the $140,000, or whatever the principal of that amount would be, were the payments throughout the time that we didn't make. So those were late by however long they were late, and Fred may be able to tell us. But I would presume that that interest acknowledged that we didn't make the payments when they came due. That would be my presumption.
We, we did not make payments.
That's correct. That's my understanding.
So, this, this right here, from July the 1st of 15. Okay, July the 1st of 15, they was paying us $2,000 a month?
The, if I could explain, the contract that was drawn up was for $17,000 a month in payments.
That, that didn't go into effect to when?
July 1st.
July the 1st. We paying them? How much, how much was we paying them?
We were paying, the agreement was for $17,000.
Okay.
Included in the agreement was a clause that basically was reimbursing them for $4,166.67 of the $17,000, which I will call a repayment of a loan. That was based on 4,166.67 times 12, or $50,000 a year, for 10 years, or $500,000. So breaking that out from the 17, leaving the remaining $12,000 as what is really the true management fee, the other $4,000 would be what I would consider the repayment of loan that they put in as repairs to the property during that time, as per the agreement that was required, they're required to do. The agreement also allowed for me to then get the records to see where that money was or spent. It turned out to be about $160,000, not 500. As a result, I reduced the $4,000 amount within the 17 to about $2,300. So we were only due to pay them, and if you recall, we never paid them, except the first two payments. So what I did is I took a credit in the settling of that agreement back in June, when the board approved the budget, and only paid them the 2,300, not the 4,600. So therefore, what you see in the schedule, I don't have in front of me, but what you have in front of me then is the original principal of, thank you, of 15966504, and then the, uh...
How much?
16, 15966504. In the column, third, last column called monthly payment, that's the 2,332.48, which is the revised from the 4,000. And what you have there is a computed interest on a monthly basis at the 6%. When this came up back in, I'm going to say December, as Mr. Bonner said, it may have been January, I think it might have been Jan, it doesn't matter, that, whatever that date was, when the discussion started being had about what the real amount was versus 500,000, and I indicated we're going to have to reduce that 4,000 down, that's when the, the Swiniger management team, in the meeting we had, Bonner and I, said that they would like 6% interest. I put in some emails to the board back then, that detail of all how this, what I'm describing back then, it's been six, eight months ago, and said that they had requested 6%, but in each email, I was very careful to say that to them and to the board, this was not agreed until the board agrees to it. So that was their request for 6% if, in essence, of the monies that they advanced.
The board never agreed to that, right?
Correct. No. It never been agreed, because the board never took action.
Now, are we talking about the Board of Commissioners, or are we talking about the Board of Directors?
Neither one.
Okay.
So basically, what you have here is, we made payments each month. We didn't really make them, because, as I said, for the first two, we did, but then we didn't make payments until June for all the other months. But the amortization is considering that each month a payment was made, just like on your mortgage on your house. As you make a payment, some goes to principal, some goes to the interest. If you take a look at the principal payment of the 22, it's 1,534, then it's 1,541, and so on and so forth, just like a regular amortization. That leaves with an ending principal of the 1,4740 that is being requested by the county manager to be paid to, to terminate that amount that was advanced.
Well, why didn't we pay them? I'm just asking. You, you say we didn't pay them all these months?
We did pay them. We did pay them finally, that 2,300 times 10 months in June, when we settled up. That was when...
We're supposed to pay them $17,000 a month, right?
Yes, it was originally 17. I reduced it down to 15 for taking the credit because the 500,000 that was, from which the 4,600 was computed, was only 160.
Where does the half million come in?
It was a figure that was given, you've seen the documents.
Okay, I, I saw the half million.
Yeah.
But best in that agreement that, not the board approved, but the authority approved, the half million was, the golf course, the management was going to invest the half million in greens and all this. Okay, that's, now, in the original document that this board approved, which was in November or December of 14, I guess it was, we, we, that's the last agreement that this board, as a Board of Commissioners, approved. Okay? That was that, that we would extend or we would amend the original three-year agreement, a four-year agreement, whatever it was. Instead of them paying us $2,000 a month to lease it, now they're going to pay us 2,600.
And that agreement specified the items that the Swiniger management was to do at the golf course.
We was led to believe, and it's mentioned in this, that Henry County was going to invest $40,000 to do certain improvements. It was never discussed that, to my mind, as to what the involvement that the, that management would take. Now, the half million, I never saw that until the...
Infamous email.
Management wanted the county to come over and finish all this other stuff. So that's when I was made aware that there was a second lengthy agreement signed by the authority. Not the Board of Commissioners, but the authority. Now, it found in that, which was a supplementary, what the attach wasn't mentioned, there was a schedule and it, it had some writing that the management was only going to be responsible for like $225,000 worth of stuff, and then Henry County was going to be responsible for about $225,000 worth of stuff. That's the first time this board had any knowledge that we figured to spend 200. We spent 43,000 in the original agreement and then all that stopped. So...
When the, when the agreement that was signed by this board, effective January 1 of 15, what was specified in that agreement is that the Swinigers were doing...
The board didn't sign that, Fred. The board, the board didn't sign the agreement that, the new agreement.
I'm, I'm not talking, I'm talking about the one that was done in 14 that was effective January 15.
Okay, 14 was the last one this board approved.
Yes.
And it merely, it merely increased. All we did was amend it.
Right. And that agreement specified the county was going to do something and that they were going to do something.
Yeah, but it was only...
There was never any documents presented to the board by the county manager at that time showing how those figures came about, but he did present to the board, and I wasn't part of it, that there was going to be $500,000 and the board was going to do 40 of it. That was specified.
The board would have to correct me, but I don't ever remember seeing a half million dollars at that point.
Well, there was no document ever presented, but as Mr. Bonner and you, as Mr. Bonner and yourself has said, that document showed up with those figures a year later.
That document showed up after we refinanced and...
Correct.
We found out that even though we signed it, I was led to believe I signed it as the Henry County chairman, and then in fact, it was signed as a chairman of the, of the corporation, which I didn't realize I was a member of.
As you recall, Chairman, you came to my office and said, "Have you ever seen this?" And I said, "No." And we went down to the conference room by your office and you brought the document out and showed it to me at that time.
Yeah. No, I, I know, I don't think you was aware of any of this.
No, I wasn't.
I, 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 I'll have to give you credit where credit's due.
This is the double column email that I found in garbage.
You found what?
It was this, the, the document you're referring to is the two columns that had $496,000 worth of reapprovements and then 43,000 handwritten in.
The one I saw, and I still got a copy of it.
Me too.
Okay. It, it was original, black and white, and then it had a line drawn, management was going to take care of this, this and this, and then down below there, lo and behold, we're going to do this, this, the county. And I add this up and it's about $225,000 worth of items, and that's what management wanted Henry County to do when all this was brought to light. And that's when they made reference to the contract. Okay, that document, as far as I remember, was not part of the agreement.
And when the renewal was done, the new agreement was done effective July 1 of 15, six months later.
Yes.
That 500,000 was still bandied around as what the figure supposedly was without any documentation.
Did you ever see that in writing?
Huh?
Did you ever see that in writing?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
But the con, the agreement was basically redrawn, understanding that there was a $500,000 figure that was presented to the board, and that's evidently how the figure came about to be 17,000 and so on. Pardon me?
That agreement that was redrawn did not reflect, okay, the original agreement that this board approved as a group, we, we approved 2,600 a month lease.
Correct.
Okay. Now, that means that we, this new agreement that we was told it was, nothing changes. Okay, then we found out that we're not getting the 2,600 a month. Okay, what are we doing now with that new agreement? We paying them 17,000 a month?
Yes.
Okay, so now, here, here's a question, and I'm not going to move on with this. I am going to move on with it. The deal is, if, if management opt out, then where, where does all this 6% come in? Is, is this something that the Development Authority approved or the corporation did?
Neither. As Mr. Oletta said and I said earlier, this was, 6% was requested by the management team.
What would it be if it wasn't 6%?
Be 6% less, about eight, seven and a half, about $8,000.
How much?
It'd be 6%. Oh, the amortize, right. That would be...
How much? I can do the math. I, I have an electronic device here.
Basically, as Mr. Bonner brings this up, the payments for 2,300, if there was no interest, then the column called interest would be applied 100% to the principal and that would be, bring it down. To answer your question, when he brings, I mean, whatever you have in front of you, if you take that 12 months of interest, whatever the figures are, added them up, that would be the figure.
What, what's the definition that would enhance the board to consider paying 6%? I mean, what, what, what is that? You, you just said management asked for that.
Yes, sir.
But it's not, it's not relying upon written clauses in the second agreement?
Or the first agreement.
Or the first agreement.
No, neither one.
The first one...
All we, we're doing that...
The first one is only the one I read, and it was just one resolution period. The second one was about, after the refinancing, it was about 28, 29 pages.
About seven, what's that? Move about seven grand?
It's about, it's 750, so it's about nine grand. Eight, nine grand, yeah. Okay. So the 6% was amortized across the period, so 6% or about 140, it's just going to be under eight grand is what my quick math is telling me.
Somewhere around eight, eight, be about 8,44, roughen it off for that bit.
Taking an average of 750 times 12 is what, what we're looking at, taking these figures.
How much?
750 times 12, using these, goes, starts at 798 and then it's at 711. I'm using an average of 750 times 12. I don't have a calculator, but...
And all I did was just gross it up to the 140. So it's somewhere between...
I, I do understand that the reason we delayed this is the fact that they had a significant, I wouldn't say repairs, but they had significant corrections, trash and two trailers and all that. Is that, I, I'm guessing that's done.
Yes, sir. There were a number of pieces that we've agreed to. We had some things to do. The Swinigers offered us some maintenance agreements along the way, but one of the biggest things that were out there was the right of way. And Jason and I talked about it, that had been an accumulation of many years of shrubs and construction and things to, to that end, and that has been cleaned up. There was some question as how some of the concrete materials that were left there, we don't know how they got there, but we've still got some concrete that's out there. But for the most part, and I, I would say the 85% of it is clean to my satisfaction of it, we're going to have to use some of the materials, the right of way maybe, and it's really funny, soon as we got it cleaned, they came in and started doing right of way work. It was kind of interesting, we're setting polls this week.
I'm going to yield the floor to anybody that'd like to chime in. How to yield the floor to District 4?
And I'm not going to beat this thing to death, but, all right. 6% was not agreed upon.
By the Board of County Commissioners, no, sir.
Again, it was requested at the time. We discussed the reduction to the 159 figure, and that's when they requested a 6%.
Commissioner France?
And basically, at that point, neither of us said to them yes or no. We said the board had to prove it. I've written some emails to try to explain it, and the board has not had a chance to act on it. This is the first time you're acting, so the figure, the percentage that they've asked for is still quote, "an ask."
Okay. We have no authority to assign it. I made that real clear. But this was a populated, this report, just the way you see it, was, it is January or February when we first started sending out the emails on it. But the board is not bound by anything. Fred and I don't have the ability to bind the board in these agreements. This is a payout. That's what they requested and that's what we listed.
All right. Well, this seems pretty simple. How about no to the 6%?
Then we pay the difference of it and that's that.
The question becomes, do, you know, they've asked for 6, are you saying zero or are you saying something? The other is, there's no interest that's being calculated since July, June 1st, July 1st, this being September, that nothing's been paid again on the 140. So I mean, however you want to do it, I'm just saying, those are things that they basically would say as to how you want to take care of it.
If the board would like, we have one of the representatives, Eric's the manager. He was instrumental in getting us in and getting us out.
Let me ask you a question before we recognize. Who, who is currently the membership by record to Henry County Office Industrial Park Corporation?
Oh, I, I've said this before, I believe it's the Board of Commissioners minus the chairman because you've announced your, your resignation from that.
Okay, who we recognizing? If you state your name, please.
Yeah, hi. My name is Eric Hammond, and I work in managerial capacity for Swiniger Management. And with respect to the 6% interest, that is something we did ask for because the capital expenditures that we outlaid, the greens, you know, amounted to a loan to Henry County. So we did ask for the 6%. This was asked back in, I believe it was December, okay? And it was presented to all the board members via email, I guess. So that was what, nine months ago, that everybody had a chance to see it. And then tonight, we're seeing it for the first time and, you know, saying emphatically, no. It's a little bit of a slap in the face, if I'm being honest.
You're saying the capital improvement's a loan?
Well, no, what I'm saying, what we did amounted to a loan.
What you did amounted to a loan?
Yes, because it was not our property that we were improving.
So that, that's considered a loan? I don't, I don't see the rationale behind it.
Okay. We spent the money.
You spent the money.
We spent the money, right? With the intentions of getting paid back. That, I mean, I...
That, that is part of the repayment structure. That part is fine.
No, a loan would be if I borrowed money from you. You made improvements on a product that you were using. That's not a loan.
And the, the agreement required us to, once we refinanced it, the arrangement turned completely upside down. It went from us getting paid to us paying the Swinigers to manage a golf course. And when the financial parts of the bonds and everything came about, it meant that we could not, at that time, recognize the profit the way we had intended when we were on the first part. Then we go back and from that period going forward, we have a period of time where they were due reimbursements because of how the arrangement changed relative to the financing or the refinancing.
Okay. I'm going to say this again, I've said it before, I didn't approve that agreement.
Agreed.
Let me, let me just, one clarification, and that is, in the agreement that was effective January, when you, first agreement this board approved, and was to go from 2 to 2,600 a month, and that agreement, Swiniger Management was responsible to do these various things. That agreement assumed, since they were keeping the profits or losses, whatever, during that contract period for which they were renting the facility, the golf course from us, they were going to get that money back through future profits. When the agreement changed on July 1, that, yes.
Future profits. Were they going to get interest on the future profits?
They were going to, they were going to earn profits under that agreement to pay themselves back. Like depreciation or however you want to consider it. When we had to change the agreement that they could not be, be, be paying us, they had to manage because the law specified IRS that we had to change that agreement, that's when it changed to where a management fee was paid and they had already advanced those funds for which they couldn't in the next, whatever number of years, that they would have gotten it by operating it when they were paying 2,600 and whatever was left over, they would have used to repay themselves. And we changed that to where they got their management fee of about 12,000. The other was the reimbursement for what they had put in, which later was reduced, like I said, to the 2,300.
The difficulties is when we changed the agreement to refinance, it changed exactly the reverse. They became just operating at force and we were still liable, we were then liable by the agreement for all their improvements, the continued maintenance, paying them a maintenance cost, any capital things that broke. That's what I meant while ago, when it kind of turned the arrangement all the way around. And we netted a huge benefit by refinancing. There's no question about that. But it changed the relationship between the two parties. They are now our manager and we still own the property and we're responsible for those losses or gains that were there. They were just going to get a flat fee. Had we been on the original agreement, they would have assumed the risk of business risk of loss and/or gains, and we'd have just gotten the flat fee they were paying. But it, when we initiated to try to refund the loan, and we did, saved a bunch of money, that changed the relationship and the partnership, if you will, whereby they were essentially just managing the golf course and it was ours to pay for everything that was operationally to it. All they were doing was getting amortized, payment for the investment they'd already made, and paying a management fee to manage the golf course for Henry County. Let me throw this out. Does any board member up here realize that when you signed that second agreement, that you were signing something other than what the board agreed to in December? I'm just asking. Okay?
Did we sign that second agreement?
Uh, yeah.
I, I thought it was a add-on.
Well, now, let me tell you the second one. And this has absolutely no reflection on the management team. I promise you, if the management team knew what was going on behind the scenes, they would have ran away and give us 160,000. But the deal is, you're talking about ownership, if you look at the tax record, you know who owns it by record. You know who owns it.
Two entities are listed there, I believe. It is the Development Authority or that, that corporation.
Okay. Okay. Now, having said that, there's not a member up here that, you had one member that was adamantly against and voted no, the vote went 5 to 1 for the renewal of the original contract. Okay? They was paying us $2,000 a month, they kept everything. They, they maintained everything, they kept up everything.
They took the losses as they...
Okay, all we did, and the reason the manager at the time did that, because he didn't want any lengthy stuff, so he told the board that in that contract, they're going to increase it. All we did was amend the original $2,000 agreement from 2,2600. There's nothing in there written, but the county manager said that we was going to expend 40,000. Okay? Now, I'm over there playing golf one day and I see white trucks running everywhere. So I called Sherry and I said, "How much work they going to do over here?" So she run the numbers on it in the next couple of days and it already spent 43,000. Well, that's close to 40. And I said, "Well, that's it." Everybody agreed to that. Well, the, when they refinanced it, I think the board signed a contract, the agreement, not knowing that they were signing as a director of the Henry County Office Industrial Park Corporation. Okay? So really, management's agreement is with the Henry County Office Park Corporation and Henry County Development Authority. Okay? That's the two groups that ought to be deciding this right here, but now, simply because... That's the two groups that ought to be deciding this right here, but now, simply because somebody thinks we are, uh, members, and I'm not a member of the Henry County Office Industrial Park, I don't care what the rule says, I don't care what the ordinance says, I'm not a member of that. So, the deal was, we never knew about the half million dollars. Okay? Management team was going to do something to the greens, is either going to put new greens or do something, and we extended that contract seven years. Okay? The supplementary contract from others, another source, extended that contract from seven years to 10 years. Okay, this Board of Commissioners up here only approved a seven-year contract on the original contract. So, anyway, having said that, I'm, I'm through talking, somebody else wants to talk. I'm just giving you a little background, it, you have to understand, it ain't personal on Thomas Smith's part, I enjoy playing golf over there. Evening, y'all.
I mean, I understand, I certainly understand your position, it's just, you know, from our position as well, we have, you know, a large sum of money that's out there that we feel is owed to us, and regardless of who signed it, you know, from my standpoint, we'd like to see those funds repaid.
I, I think they probably going to do it, but anyway, anybody else have any comments? We got a resolution authorizing termination reimbursement payment of 140,743,43 to the Management LLC, and approval of the budget amendment number nine. And I take it that a budget amendment, this is not in the new, uh, 2016, 2017, uh, golf park budget, so this is another 140,000, past the, oh, it's in there? Oh, it's in that 650,000?
No, it's not in the operational budget you approved for this year, but when we do the audit, and we publish the FY '16 results, 630, '16, June, June 30th results, that amount of money will be restricted or assigned against fund balance, because the board, basically back in June, and the board resolution in which the acceptance of the termination said the amount that would be owed was that figure. So, by virtue of that resolution, it basically means that that was effective before June 30th, and therefore the fund should be restricted in the audit, so from a fund balance usage, it'll go against last year.
But it is a reduction in fund balance, we're paying it out of fund balance just the previous year, recognizing when it was hit.
So, based on this, uh, resolution, it says it, uh, authorizes the chairman to execute the necessary paperwork, so that, that would be the BOC chairman or the chairman of the Henry County Office Industrial Park.
That's the Board of Commissioners chairman, because you're approving a budget amendment, and authorizing the funds to be spent, because it's your money.
Okay. So, uh, what's your recommendation?
What's my recommendation? At this point, they spent the money, what, and they've been amortized down by payments, whether it's with or without interest, the board feels, you know, they did what they said they were going to do, and they did, it wasn't 500, it wasn't even the 235 or whatever it was that, that document the chairman's mentioned was supposed to be, I think, 230, 260, and it turned out to be only 160. So, the amount that they actually spent to do what needed to be done was much, much reduced, but that's been credited back to the county, so that what they're getting in this agreement here, this resolution or request, is only that amount, not greater than that amount, and we've also reduced, as I said, what was originally part of the 17, and taken credit already on it. So, they having, they having done what they needed to do under the agreement this board signed back effective June, January 1, that requested them to do that, which six months later, we requested that they cancel it so that we could go ahead and refund and save 3.3 million dollars on the bonds, couldn't have been done, because our bond counsel said that agreement, if we continued it the way it was, within a year or so, this county would be responsible for a lot of income taxes, because they were sold on tax-free bonds, and you cannot have somebody leasing your property with tax-free bonds out there, and it already had been in place for years, had it continued, the county would have been responsible for that at some point in time, it looked like it would be less than 12 months. So, the agreement had to be canceled to stop that exposure for the county paying those back taxes on that bond, and allow us to refund the bonds and save 3.3 million for the new bonds. So, they agreed to go ahead and cancel the agreement that they just entered into six months earlier, to allow the county to do what we needed to do to get refunded and save 3.3 million for the taxpayers of this county.
I'm going to throw this out, what it's worth, I had a meeting with the auditor from Malden and Jenkins, uh, and he indicated that, based on his experience, that it wouldn't be, uh, a violation of any IRS rules that he knew of. Now, I know he's not, I'm sure he's not a bond counsel, but he, he did, uh, that's what he told me.
This was thoroughly vetted by Jim Monasell, our bond counsel, and...
I understand. I go back a long way with Jim Monasell, and, uh, Billy Kemp, and, uh, uh, either Gordon Morton or Morton Gordon, whichever name he uses first.
And then there was another consultant that did the calculations, and determined that we were about six months under the old lease agreement from reaching the threshold where the penalties would have kicked in, and the penalties were estimated in the 250 to 300,000 dollar range.
And that's what I was referring to just a minute ago, that, as Patrick reminded me, is that we actually hired an outside consultant out of Houston, I believe it was, somewhere in Texas, paid him $5,000, because they were the experts to calculate, interpreting the law, and saying, "This is what you got to do," and coming up, as Patrick said, with the estimate, and I thought it was somewhere around 250 to 500,000 dollars that we could have been exposed in tax, back taxes.
I yield the floor to District 4.
Now, interest rates right now, I, I hadn't seen a 6% interest rate, and I do this stuff all day, every day, in years. I mean, it's been...
I don't disagree with you, again, mine was to listen to what they requested, reported to an amortization, and allow the board to come back and say, "We don't want to pay that rate, we want to pay less," or whatever you want to do. I'm just the messenger to carry forward what Mr. Hammond has said, his request and his boss's requests were at the meeting we had. No further insight on my part was to say, "Do an amortization as was requested, and let the board choose to do it or not do it." So, that's, that's where it's been for the past nine months.
Mr. Commissioner, the prime rate today is about 3.5%.
Yeah, that's today.
Which is sort of the basis for where all the loans come off of.
Yeah, I'm, I'm aware of that, and also, it, it is increasing, so, I mean, a few months ago, it was 3.2, 3.1, 2.9.
Yeah.
Just pointing that out for the board.
Uh, Mr. Hammond has asked a question of the board, if it's the interest that's questioned, then the prime rate, um, as, that Patrick stated there, uh, please, don't let me put you more words out there.
No, we would certainly stipulate to that.
It's been 3.25 since, uh, 2009.
The prime?
Prime's been 3.25 since at least, since about 2009. It went up to 3.5, uh, January 1 of this year, or January, I don't know what day, January of this year. According to a history of prime rate that I just found on the internet, which I don't know how reliable it is.
I would question that, I hadn't gotten 3.2% money in a while, I've been lower to 9. Anyway, points don't, just making a point.
It's the interest part, I think we just reduced it by about 3,800 dollars would be the request. We'll calculate it, amortize it again, if that's the board's wishes.
If, if, if the board wants to pay 3.25 or whatever percentage, and you want to pay the 100, and whatever the principal would come out, you know, like, based on that and amortization, then I'll calculate it, and that'll be the figure that'll be paid, however you want to do it, with or without interest, whatever rate you want. So, all I've got to do is replug the number at a different percentage, or whatever you want to agree to.
I yield the floor.
Who, who other yield the floor, anybody like to make a comment?
Fred, what would the total loan be? The whole principal, what would the principal be?
And looking at the schedule again, the averages, average for the 12 months, looks like it'd be about 750 dollars in interest per month, it was almost 800, and got down to 711, if I'm not correct, if I'm correct. Using the average of 750 times 12, I think that's $9,000. If you use 3%, it should be roughly then, um, half of that figure, obviously 6 to 3, so I'm saying that 9 will turn to 4,500 dollars. So, there'd be a 4,500 dollar reduction to the 140,000, using, using just an approximation, as I said, if it's 3.25, it'd be a little bit more, but however, however, obviously it'll calculate. With an amortization schedule, that has an effect, and at this point, it, until it's calculated, I can't give you an exact figure.
It's pretty darn close, though. Just looking at the table here, we're, we're pretty darn close on that.
Can you calculate it out quickly?
Let me step in the office.
If you want to give me five minutes, I'll go to my office, and I'll rerun the schedule. Give me five minutes to go to my office, and I'll come back.
Let's take a five-minute break. Anybody object?